Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, September 29th, 2021, Meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. It is now 7:50. The board has been in executive session since 6:45. Can I have a motion to reconvene the public meeting?
So, I'll second.
All favoritism stat. Please stand here to collect the votes. Okay, I'm going to start with the president's report, and I'd like to begin this evening by welcoming this special guest. Hi, Biscuit. Biscuit, do you want to come up here? Okay. All right, so Biscuit.
Hi, Biscuit.
Hello. Biscuit is here to remind everyone that the Chappaqua Children's Book Festival is this Saturday. It's an absolutely wonderful free event that this year is being held at the Chappaqua train station. If you're familiar with the festival, you're already excited, and if you've never been, you should come. It's amazing. You get to meet authors and illustrators, there's fun games, and Biscuit. So, given that the retailers have already warned us that nothing will be in stock for the holidays, you can take care of that as well. So, just one time talk. Even though this is an outdoor event, due to the potential for crowds and close proximity, masks are required. So, be like Biscuit. Put on your mask and come to the festival on Saturday. Thank you, Biscuit. But before the book festival, Friday is homecoming in Greeley. The sports boosters have organized what looks like a kind of fun food and activities for all ages before the big football game. Plus, you can come all afternoon and watch our student athletes compete across a variety of sports. So, we're really looking toward it. This is definitely now football weather, so bring a sweater on here and bring a sweater. Elementary open houses, both three and the open house were held last week, and the middle school open houses are this week. All are virtual. Hopefully, by next year, we'll be back in the buildings. But it's always great to meet the teachers and see the classrooms, even if you didn't get the full experience of sitting in the tryout. And I wanted to also update the community on a project that the board has been working on. So, we have been for some time as a board in discussing whether revisions were warranted to our board questions, our strategic questions. These questions guide our work as a board to ensure that when we make decisions, they are mission aligned and furthering the work we believe to be important to the district and moving in the direction we believe will best serve our students and our community, both today and in the future. So, we attended a board retreat September 20th and 21st where we worked on revising our board questions and determined that our revision was insufficient and ultimately we needed to move from having two guiding questions to three. I will share a draft language in a moment, but wanted to first say a word about board retreats. Board retreats are built into the structure of board operations to allow the board time to work on internal governance as well as strategic planning. To borrow from an excellent essay by Lisa Davis, who is the former executive director of the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association, board told retreats to better understand the interests of school districts and develop a strong governance team. Board of education service, like any other professional position, is best accomplished with ongoing professional development and in-depth learning. Board members need to be knowledgeable and current on topics such as school district governance, board and superintendent roles, public education issues, policy development, education standards, curriculum evaluation, school safety, negotiations, and state and federal legislation, and more. So, retreats are set aside from the open meeting while precisely so we can work on governance issues as a board. And holding an annual retreat allows us to set aside time as our professional development to work on and learn about these issues so we can best serve the community. So now, what I'd like to do is share the working draft of our board questions, which are still a work in progress, but reflect what we believe should be our guiding principles as we make decisions for the district. I will read these aloud, my eyes hold, as I know it can be hard sometimes to see at home and many of you are following along at home. And we will be scheduling a work session or time of future board meetings to discuss them and consider any feedback, continue revisions, and hopefully adopt new versions. So, if you have any feedback, please email the board or come to the work session or board meeting when we schedule that. So, our first strategic question is around budget and operations, and this one so far has been left intact, which is how can the district ensure continuing excellence of academic and extracurricular programs while developing a budget that is fiscally responsible? Our second question, which we anticipate working with a little bit, but currently stands as addressing teaching and learning, how can the district ensure that all students think deeply, support their thinking, apply problem-solving skills, and actively participate in their learning as they apply our content knowledge? And then the third question that we were working on as part of our retreat that's currently in draft form is how can the district develop students who are ethical, empathetic, respectful, and resilient global citizens and leaders? So, I think that gives you a feeling for sort of where our thinking is and what we're working towards. And again, we welcome community feedback. So, turning now, you'll note that under the president's report on the agenda, there's also an in-depth update on the proposed Form-based Code. We want to just keep the community apprised of our actions relating to the proposed adoption of the FGEIS and zoning legislation. As many of you know, the responses to the comments and questions submitted to the DGEIS have been coming in piecemeal. The sections responsive to our questions and comments were among the last sections to be released, dropping to the public on September 17th. By letter dated September 18th, we, through our lawyer, asked the town board to delay the vote date to adopt the FGEIS as complete, which is currently scheduled for tomorrow, to give us more time to read through the hundreds of pages of responses and thoughtfully analyze them. Our request for more time was denied. Over the past 12 days, we have read through consultants' answers to chapters 2H and 2I. This is not light reading. And wanted to make sure that as an interested agency and as a beneficiary of the school district, we submitted a comment in advance of the vote addressing any issues that still existed for us after reading the comments and changes addressed in the responses. As many of you know, when we commented on the DGEIS, the board raised a host of potential concerns. Given the time pressure, we focused our comments submitted in advance of tomorrow's vote on the two most salient issues. Our board's letter to the town board addressing our concerns has been posted to our website where the other communications regarding the FBC have been posted. The briefly outlined concerns are that first, the FGEIS contains no actual analysis of the impact to school budgets, taxes, or displacement that may result from the proposed action; and then the FGEIS lacks thresholds for mitigation related to potential adverse impacts on the school district. Each of these is expanded upon in much detail in our letter, which, as I said, is posted and was submitted to the town board this morning. I want to sincerely thank our attorney, Adam Starlow, for working with us to make sure we could submit our comment in a timely fashion despite the short timetable. And that, for anyone still with me, concludes my president's report.
Will I say something?
Yeah, of course.
You know, we're a school district, and keeping our schools open and safe with the pandemic going on is our top priority. It was almost a year to the day that I brought up the issue of the FBC at a school board meeting. Vicky and I spoke about it. We were chastised on social media about our comments. We're not against development by any means. This is a school district. We encourage development. We like progressiveness. We think we should be moving forward. However, we have to do that with thought. You know, I personally reached out to a town board member earlier this week to ask that they advocate for the school district to provide us additional time to respond to the answers that the consultants provided through the questions. I know Adam, our attorney, has also done that. I was told no, that we've had the time, so I guess we get what minimal time the majority of the town board has decided to provide us. We're all part of this community. We should work together for the community. That includes the school, the town, all the other interested agencies. You know, I'm forever the optimist, and I hope that the town board majority will consider allowing or reconsider allowing the school district to have additional time to respond. Because again, our job is to educate our students in the community. So, thank you, Hillary. I just wanted to let the board know that I tried a different avenue, and that didn't seem to go anywhere either.
I'd like to say something to, just to add something different to everything that's been said. I heard last night, I did attend a town board meeting last night, and I heard a different perspective on the FGEIS that I don't think we've heard before. And it was a perspective that even if the FGEIS is incomplete, that the town board can still use it to make informed decisions on how to move forward. And, you know, while I do appreciate the desire to be as informed as possible, and more information is always helpful, but I just want to say that it's really important as we work together to share our perspectives. And so, what I would say about that is that the FGEIS is really not for research purposes. It's actually a legal document with a very specific purpose, and that purpose is to declare that there are no adverse impacts. And what it does is it's declaring under meter of law that the entire 72 acres can be subject to the Form-based Code. So, it's much more than informational. It is setting a precedent. So, you know, I just think that it's important that as we work together, we're on the same page, understand why we're asking for more time, why this is so important to us. And that's because it's much more than a research document. We're setting, well, the town is setting precedent. And when you set precedent, you have to know that it's for people who may be in these positions that are very much unlike you, that might have much different agendas and opinions. So, you know, this is by way of emphasizing the point that we think it's very important to take the time and the school district will be, that is the interested agency that will have the most impacts and will affect the taxpayers the most. So, it's setting a precedent. I think it's important to understand what the document really is doing.
I have technical issues before. I would also like to comment and say that, you know, I think it's interesting that we haven't done our retreat to be talking about the strategic questions and what's critical in terms of what the knowledge that we want all of our students to graduate from here with, what our focus should be as a board and as a school district. We are not accustomed to commenting on zoning legislation. That's really not our area of focus and shouldn't be, except to the extent that it affects our school district. That is why we are an interested party. And I just think it's very important as this moves forward that, again, to reiterate to the community that we are here to represent the interest of the school district, to talk about how it can be impacted. That's what this whole study is about. And I want to be clear again, as we've said over and over again, we are not for or against a Form-based Code. This Form-based Code, we are trying to let the community know what our concerns are, what mitigation factors have to be involved in here so that we can continue to educate our students in the way that we wish to continue educating them and with the high caliber that people have come to expect of this school district. And the thing that has been frustrating, as much as we are both, you know, partisan in this town and people that should be working together, it has been very difficult not to really, we feel, have the appropriate amount of time to respond to what's going on and also to feel as though our interests are not being adequately responded to in terms of making sure that no matter what plan gets passed by the town board, that they can ensure that our educational system remains intact. So, it's very important for us to try and maintain these relationships. But as our letter shows, we just feel that there are major deficiencies with what's happening right now that are not addressing what could potentially happen with the school district. And we're just trying to shed light on that and get answers. So, that's all I have to say.
Another thing that I do want to mention, because I receive this question more than once, you know, over the last few months. The question is, well, how many students do you think the school district, how many additional students do you think the school district can take? And what I've always said, and what I know everyone else agrees with, is that we will never place a number on the number of students that the school district would accept. We will accept all students that come through our doors and who live here. And we will accept them gladly with open arms and open hearts. The question is really for the community to let their elected representatives know what is the amount of increased taxation that they can bear with regard to the quality of education that they want the children of the school district to have. And that's always been, you know, public schools have always been subject to local control, and it's up to the local communities to decide what kind of education they want for their kids. So, it's really a question for the community. It's not really a question for us. And, you know, we will never say that we'll accept only X number of kids. First of all, we can't do that. And secondly, we don't want to do that. It's a question of having the right information for us to plan, first of all, and secondly, for the community to make informed decisions.
All right, thank you. So, we're going to move into the superintendent's report, and then we will have our data performance presentation and biography piece, and then we will move into our audience. So, as David's preparing to set this up, I'd like to recognize we have a lot of people in the audience today, a lot of our students in the back there. We typically only have one to six people in the audience, so this is exciting for us. And so, this is the part where I highlight some of our COVID information and some pieces of the agenda for the school board and the community. So, let me provide some updated information. So, we've been carrying our vaccination numbers now. I'm just going to focus basically on the students. You'll see we're at 92% vaccinated in Greeley, and we are holding steady at the middle schools, but it's my hope that within the next two months, I'll be able to advocate for elementary schools, and we'll start to see increases in our middle-level program and vaccination in our elementary program. But this is where we are right now. So, 86% of the students at Bell or Elbow School are vaccinated, and 89% at Seven Bridges. And why this is important is because if you are exposed to COVID, I'm able to go into the system, verify you're vaccinated, and then you can go on to the quarantine. So, that is certainly a benefit of being vaccinated. And so, we'd also like to share with you, this past Sunday, we did our first round of testing. We're required to do it weekly. And these are the numbers of staff and students who were tested by the district's nursing staff campus. Most of the people who were tested were required to. As you know, we are also required to offer testing to all unvaccinated students in the district who were called in or vaccinated staff who didn't have any, or families took advantage of testing who were not required to do. So, we very few vaccinated staff were tested, but we had quite a number of unvaccinated staff who were required to test with us. And then we had a small amount who was passed by two, which was having a private test done on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. And giving those results to the district as a part of a requirement to the New York State Department of Health. I'd like to thank Adam, Josh, and the lease for really helping facilitate the testing for the district. Of course, our nursing staff, and then we had other support staff that have a professional development team facilitating this process. This was a larger-scale testing than we usually do, but we were able to handle it effectively. And as more parents wanted, they're hesitant to get tested if they're unvaccinated, we welcomed them to do so. And I do believe that this was a better option for us than entering into the pool tests that other schools did in Westchester County that was connected to the Westchester Department of Health. Because we're able to open testing up based on our numbers and the available tests to all students every week for other places to have a percentage that they'll be offering test based on their partnership with the Westchester. So, I still stand by this decision.
Do you think anybody found it annoying enough that they'll get vaccinated?
We have a number of people who have been vaccinated and will only be testing with us for two weeks. They definitely have 14 days. And then we have another pocket of people who will be testing with us for a few additional weeks that have gone and have received the first shot. So, that is true. Okay, so this is our COVID number, our quarantine number from the last presentation that we had here. We had exposure on transportation into buildings. And it was at the elementary and middle levels. We had a number of students who were not eligible to be vaccinated who had to access remote instruction. And here we are this week. We had a pocket where no one was home, learning remotely. And then we just had another exposure at Bell School, which was required of a number of students who were not eligible to receive vaccination, have to access remote instruction. Again, in this scenario, our exposure is occurring from the bus. And so, until we have the ability for middle and elementary students to be vaccinated, this is typically where our exposure will occur and access instruction will. Okay, so now we're going to move over to Dr. Keith, who's going to talk about the grant on the agenda tonight.
Do you want to just follow up?
Sure.
Do we get any, I mean, I think it's probably too early to know, but even with the bus exposure, are we hearing about anybody else actually testing?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I would say over the past 15 months, we haven't really had any scenarios where there was spread on a bus or remote quarantine.
Because I know that in other places, they are starting to appeal to the states to drop the quarantine rules when kids are holding masks. Do you think that's something that we can touch? We got a new health director today, so do you think this is something?
So, yeah, that's a, so we're following Westchester Department of Health studies and we're following the CED guidelines. And we've been in meetings with the county talking about, if not adjusting or eliminating the quarantine processes for the bus, at least adjusting down to three weeks. So, less students would be impacted. But as of right now, they haven't made any shifts. But if they do, we will immediately follow it.
So, you see, one, you have a gift on the agenda, and then an adjustment to a gift. The first gift that you'll find is from the Newcastle United for Youth. It's a grant for $5,500 for practice mannequins and some technology related to CPR training. So, we're going to provide CPR training with the assistance of this grant to all of our ninth graders as part of the physical education program. That's not part of the program currently. So, I think that's a nice add and help students be equipped to assist with someone in distress with new CPR skills. And the CPR training, as you can see, has come a long way where the mannequin will communicate through the iPad and the apps and actually like track impressions and things like that. So, it's become a kind of high-tech endeavor. So, we thank the Newcastle United for Youth for that gift. And then you'll see an adjustment. I presented this grant a couple of months ago, but when we got the final, the final cost, it was, it had increased a little bit. So, the CSF, our friends at the CSF were generous to make that adjustment for us. And so, they've increased that number from 1,200 to 1,900. And you'll see that on your agenda as I talk. So, thanks for, Newcastle United for Youth, and also our friends at CSF for their generous donations.
So, the last thing I wanted to speak about publicly tonight, I'm actually going to defer to Andrew Lennon, or assistant superintendent of business. We're dealing with some water damage really based on quarantine ISO. I wanted you to explain what the next steps are in regulating the damage that we have experienced in the high school junior.
All right, Dr. Keith. So, your president's, as you can see on the screen here, we've ordered, we've got a little question for one of our boards. Unfortunately, it appears as though we may have additional damage on the main floor as well as the fitness center spaces. We are thankfully covered through our, through our nicer four-foot gap. We anticipate that the gym that you see on the screen will be fully restored and intact for the play of youth in about three weeks, barring any unforeseen delays. We can still see some moisture in that space. So, until that's fully remedied, we can't start putting the new floor in. The main gym floor will take about four weeks for us to remove and replace. Also, real big bleachers to get that fixed off fully. So, we will be putting that in. It's our intention to have that all done well in advance of the basketball system service, where we monitor that very closely. The yoga space and the fitness center are also areas of concern for us. The hardwood floors underneath the rubber mats that we have in the fitness center and elsewhere. So, Mr. Remondo and the maintenance staff have already done some mitigation steps that we hope will prevent us from tearing up those spaces. But we are complying very closely. And again, I will highlight, this is all going to be covered by our authority regarding. And I recognize, so briefly, about different other sources of coverage on that, particularly FEMA. But our other sources typically be closure, insurance, department. So, we will have a small deductible on in and out of coverage. We'll have a nice little floor, a green little space.
Our goal is to rip the floors up as soon as possible. I know that sounds bizarre, but, you know, we have winter coming. We need to hold PE classes. We need to support our indoor athletic program. So, we'd like to hopefully begin work on that on our large end next week. And so, we'll keep you updated, and we'll probably have to at some point send something out to the community. But we'll be able to manage this right now because we're ready to be outside. But pretty soon, that won't be the case. So, we need to work very, very quickly. The other piece of this is we are, so the seat.
I just wanted to just confirm that this hasn't caused any interruption in classes.
Oh, no, we're okay because we're outside. But the problem is the creek in the back by the gym. So, Andrew's looking at whether or not we need to have a specialist come in and share with us our mediation plan. However, it's complicated because that's the property and, I mean, it's watershed. And so, we're mediating that. Might, the costs may not be aligned with the repair associated if it overflows again. So, we'll be talking about that to you at a future meeting. The district, before we arrived, had looked at remediating that creek area and the complications associated with doing it because of the way, where the creek is and the type of property that it's on is pretty complicated. But we need to examine that again, obviously, based on what's happened here. So, that is the end of our superintendent's report. So, now we're going to transition over to Dr. Keith, who will, who's going to do the assessment report.
As David switches us over, I want to get started by sharing that typically as a part of this report, I share with you New York State assessment results for grades like the elementary, middle school, ELAMAT assessments as well as science. Those reports continue to be embargoed. So, we have, that data has been released to the school district, but at this point, we are prohibited by the state education department from reporting any of those results publicly. So, those are still embargoed until New York State releases that information. But I do have some other data that I typically share this time of year. So, we will share the New York State data when we can at a future meeting. At this point, we'll go through some of the other data. We have the AP results, recent results, MAP scores, and things like that. So, we'll do this kind of in two pieces, and I'll share the New York State data at a future meeting. So, just in terms of the organization of the report, typically, we would include the three-through-eight testing program. As I said, it's embargoed at this point. I am going to share some MAP scores with you as an overview, recent exam scores, and advanced placement scores. With regard to the MAP scores first, we had implemented MAPS just a couple of years ago. And it was good timing in that it was pre-candemic and it really provided some rank data that presented how MAPS works to the board in the past. But typically, it gives us what they call a written score for each student. We can track student growth over time. So, you can see on this graph, what we're really looking for is the cohort that you're looking for. You can look at the grade one cohort, two cohort, three cohort, et cetera. Those are the grades on the bottom. And you can see how they scored fall with here and then the spring. And what we're looking for is that growth over time. I mean, you do have to have a little bit of caution here that not to compare one cohort to the next. So, that jump for, for example, from first grade to second grade, that's a different group of students. So, cohort. So cohorts have kind of relative strengths in their data. So when you're, when you are comparing, you're really comparing the blue to the red to the orange is one cohort growth over the course of the year. And then we can watch that cohort over time. For example, next year, we can kind of watch that same cohort into the next year. But you can't really jump from like first grade to second grade. But this gives you an overall sense of how the districts are. However, the district students are growing over time with ELA here. And so it's a nice graph. And then similarly, another nice growth graph for MAP. And you can see that consistent growth for the grade levels and also for the cohorts. So this is kind of an early warning system that we do to identify any natural problems. It also gives us data on our relative strength in areas that we may need to focus with regard to curriculum. So we can look at, you know, identify the areas that students are scoring really well and other areas where they're not scoring as well. And so we can look at not only student intervention, but also curricular areas that we may need to develop. So overall, the MAP scores look really good. Region's exam scores, just as a reminder, last year, New York State made the decision to only administer the regions exams if they're federally required. So typically you would opt back. I think quite a few results. In this case, we're really looking at this algebra, English and English and living environment from 2021. The others were canceled. And you'll also remember we had shared that students had more flexibility with regard to that transcript. And the state said that students were not required to take the exam. Passing the five required regions exams was a requirement of graduation. But the state gave us some latitudes to say the student was in a course that typically terminated in a region's exam. And the student passes the course and they don't need to take the exam. They can opt out of the exam. So the number of students that took these exams was much less than had typically taken them in the past. And you can see our US regions results. This is, this is very challenging to compare even. I had some hesitation to even put them on the same chart because it's different groups of kids. There was only, you know, I have the number I have to look up. There were less than 100 students in 2021 that took that English exam. So it's comparing that smaller group with like much larger groups in years past. But just to give you a sense of how the students did that opted to take it last year. You can see the overall average score was a 92. I did break it down, but this is a reminder. The regions exams were all canceled in 2020. And that's why we don't have a bar there of 2021. You can see how that distribution was distributed across the scoring bracket. And again, just in a look at this data, there's some caution because it's not a whole group of students. It's just kind of those students that opted in. So it's tricky to compare. I don't think that we can safely from year to year in terms of the measure of the strength of weakness of our program. This is the algebra regions. You see the overall average score there again in 2020. The regions exam was canceled. If you're listening, you can remember that there was an adjustment for last year where all of our eighth grade students for the first time took the algebra regions. So that was, those students are included here. And then we had a number of students that also took the algebra regions that really, that weren't part of that kind of acceleration for all programs in eighth grade. And then I wrote that down just a little bit here. So you can see the middle school students had an average score of an 85 for the region's exam. So that was a pretty strong show. And compared to previous years, you see a little bit higher. Those were some accelerated students in eighth grade. And then some students that didn't accelerate in eighth grade that took that region to stay in the ninth grade. It's with this data, it's the all of the students in eighth grade. And I pulled out the students that were part of the degree just to give you a sense of how our middle school students scored. And then you can see the algebra regions distribution across the different grade level bands. And we did see it drop from 85 to 100. Last year was such a different year for our students. So we're learning globally, like more remote. Other students quarantined for periods of time. The academic period was for, and obviously the program. So it's certainly hard to tease out which factors push the data one way or the other. So but that, those are the data that we have for the algebra regions exam bands.
I'm sorry, can I stop you?
Yeah, absolutely.
So is it fair to say that the eighth grade last year as a whole did consistently as well as the ninth graders who were not accelerating? What does that mean to you?
I think it's fair to say that the eighth grade as an overall class did better than the ninth graders had done previously. But it's like you're comparing kind of whole grade levels or the group that would have previously been accelerated and others that may not have.
I would go further to say that the decision to have all students in eighth grade take algebra with the right, at least not now, to perform an assessment. And it opened up a lot of different options for ninth grade for eighth grade students. And I am, I am certainly pleased with our decision to continue that model forward. And I would anticipate that these scores may look different now that students are onsite in algebra every day in both middle schools.
So this next chart, you can see that again in 1920, we don't have any scores. And then because most of the regions exams were canceled, you can see the hemis across the right side. You do have scores for English, which you saw before. And then I broke out top course, what the grades were. The number of students taking exams in some of these courses were very small, especially the degree courses. So it was just a couple of, a couple of students in some cases canceled, less than 10 in some cases. So again, it's hard to compare last year, previous year because of that. Then I did have some advanced placement exam data to share. So you can see in this graph, the number of students that took exams and scored in each of the grade bands from one through five. There were fewer students last year that took the AP exam overall. And you can see kind of the bend of that curve is similar. There's just far fewer students there. It's interesting. We've been hearing, increasingly hearing from colleges that they're considering AP scores less or not at all. So I wonder if that fact added in addition to the pandemic. And you can see a pretty significant drop in terms of the number of AP scores or AP exams taken.
And I just want to add to something. I'm not sure. I'm sorry. So let me just clarify for the board. Students are required to take the AP exams if they're enrolled in class. Last year, we made it optional based on our experience in previous year with AP administration for our students. And that was the recommendation of the high school team because it was extraordinarily stressful. So it's interesting to look at the data based on who chose to take the assessments when we didn't take them as a part of the course.
And to add to that, we were also recently, just this, this week, we were in a meeting with our school council team with admissions officer from a very, very difficult, highly competitive college. And they said that they still look for students to take AP courses. They see them as a real challenge and they understand that level of challenge. But they said that the score is not, you know, for this particular college we're speaking to, they said the score is not nearly as important. In fact, the students didn't even have to report the score on the AP exam. So I think we're going to see a trend in that direction. We're going to see, and I think we'll see it increase. Okay, I do want to mention, I'd like to mention for the regions portion, that it did give students flexibility with regard to that score being on their, on their transcript or not. So even for students that took that exam, and that happens for eighth grade students and also for all the degree students. If they did well on the exam and they thought it would help them, they can put it on their transcript. If not, they get off to the E, which was examined. So they didn't have to put it on their transcript. So they had that flexibility. Here you can see the percentage of total AP students with a score of three plus. And you know, remember as Dr. Akram said, the rules in 2021 with regard to being able to opt out were a little different than in previous years. You can see that data and you have the overall number of exams as well as the average score for the different courses. So I have some degree class of 2021 data. I also include some of the 2020 data. You can see the National Merit Commended Students, semifinalists, et cetera. 98% of the class, which is pretty consistent with previous years, were not in higher education. And then you can see the ACT and SAT scores over the last couple of years. So I conclude on the track of the last several years, which is a list of, list of anticipated matriculation with regard to colleges and the students reported to us if they were going to attend last year in 2021. Certainly a really nice list of colleges that students have. So that's the, that's the data report that I have for you this evening. And I guess that'll bring the New York State data for three through eight once it's, it's probably starting to roll.
Any questions for? It's a hard presentation here. There's so many different variables over the past two years in our testing program. Even in SAT administration, we did our best to offer SAT as many times as practical based on the health concerns that you're experiencing at the time. I even if you remember what the handle was. So I feel like our data must have been consistent even in the face of great difficulty. While we can't present our ELA and math data to you right now, we all know the challenges associated with that administration. And the choices that were made by the New York State Department to use recital tests. So even if we were presenting that to you tonight, unless, unless comfortable with that, using that data to draw decisions on any of our math assessments, is what we're relying heavily on here.
So Christine, it just seems to me that we really have to rely on next year's scores to really assess how our students are doing. Based on, you know, here we're comparing apples to oranges a little bit. And so it's a little challenging. But you know, I am concerned nevertheless that we are seeing some downturns, especially in algebra. How would you assess this going forward with next year's results? How would you approach those challenges next year? Because that will be a more representative sample.
I, so I, we're going to answer that in two parts. So I'm going to start with the first part where we have a really strong handle on our students and their performance in grades one to eight because of the math assessment, which was administered last year, was administered previous year, and will be administered this year. And we're in the process of doing the first wave. Now three times over the course of the year. And it really helps us plan individualized instruction and make adjustments for our instructional practices. But in terms of algebra, we've made significant shifts in the way that we're supporting that program. And I just maybe Adam, you can share some of the strategies that we've been using to help our, our eighth grade teachers in particular address some of the instructional differences that they need to account for now that it's not, for lack of a better term, an honors program.
Yeah, so we did extensive curriculum writing and professional development over the summer. We spent two full weeks with our, with our middle school math teachers as well as teachers that support those programs, special education, and also our team teachers in the middle school. We pulled in a math expert chair in form of a regional math teacher, former high school teacher, middle school teacher, department chair, that to be a kind of an outside expert that we use as a facilitator and much of the professional development, as well as our own director of technology and mathematics, et cetera. And we redesigned the curriculum for that course. It was a little bit differentiated for the students. They're experiencing homework that has three different sections to it. And students pick two of the sections. So there's like a skill building section and a core section and then an enrichment section. Students can do all three if they want to start the skill building section and then do the core and then do the enrichment. Of course, students, all students do two sections of it. So that's a purposeful redesign, which we're here to have students engage in that content so it's more differentiated and then we can give the students in eighth grade, regardless of how they enter that course. And what it does, it's challenging for us to measure now is it gives all students the opportunity to reach terminal courses in high school that many students have not had the opportunity to reach had they not taken that algebra course in eighth grade. So that, that opportunities or the doors that that opens, it's hard to measure, but we've heard over and over from competitive colleges that the terminal math class matters. And so to have that extra year walking to middle school, even if the student finds it really challenging and struggles through it, it does open up opportunity in, you know, as seniors and seniors with those challenging upper level math classes prior to college.
Right, and I'd like to remind the community that we have and have had open enrollment for algebra. And parents could certainly have overriding, over the recommendation. But parents had to, have, had to be active and engage in that process with the administration. So if you had a parent that chose not to do that, then you're at a disadvantage. So this is one of our ways of being more equitable in our business. And I think it's in line with our strategic plan. And I look forward to sharing with the board and the community our progress over the course of the year. And I know it will be a part of our opening presentations for our education during the context of our meetings. And we'll share with you more progress at the end of the school year when we can analyze the results on the algebra assessment.
And I know this is a harder presentation. I know this is a harder presentation in terms of compiling the data to see how our kids are doing. But I think that the choices that you all made last year in terms of making tests as optional as possible was really commendable in terms of how our students were doing in ways that are not academic. And really making this school year in its bizarre form as sort of comfortable and accessible and manageable for as many as possible. So even though, I think the data presentation harder, I think that it was absolutely the right choice for, for the kids. And you know, I guess what, what is or is not administered this year was what we need to do.
We really wanted, like, what is reasonable? Is it reasonable in the middle of a pandemic to have, to require that students take an AP exam? No, that wasn't, that wasn't a reasonable decision. Put that up potentially impact in our school? Absolutely. But I mean, at some point, you have to sit back and think, what is in the best interest of our students, given the conditions in which we're, we're in right now? So hopefully, because we're in a much better space and if things continue on the current path that we're in, we'll be able to have our students receive an R assessment that are typical and have that information to be able to plan forward in the ways that we have in the past. It just wasn't, it just wasn't practical or possible.
Amy, what is? Yeah, I have a question. And I agree with what you're saying, Hillary, as well in terms of what's reasonable under these circumstances. But I know it has been brought up in previous years about the requirement to take the AP exam at the end of an AP class. So was that a temporary adjustment or do you see that moving forward? And I don't know, it's interesting to me because it fits into our whole picture of, you know, the social emotional aspect of our students. And especially some of them that get to senior year, which is a very pressure year, and they may, you know, be taking a lot of AP courses. And by the time those AP exams are given, they're already accepted to college, et cetera. They've made some decisions. But it's also interesting to note that, and we've heard this as well, we heard this recently at our retreat, about, about colleges really focusing on the students challenging themselves. It's more important that they take a class and see how they do in the class than what that one assessment tells them. So I don't know what your decisions are moving forward. I know that's always been a requirement that you must take it to get credit for the course. So I don't know if that's a, that's sort of up for discussion as to moving forward.
So I think in my second year here, we opened enrollment for AP classes since only students have the prerequisite course, right? The, in the conversations about requiring the AP exams, and I'm not saying it might not shift moving into the future, but the faculty felt that was a positive moment of their course for students.
Right.
And so last year, we made that adjustment out of concept. This year, the expectation of students will be taking the AP exam if they are available in the course, not in the course. But it doesn't mean conversations in the future can't, can't happen around that requirement. I just know at this moment, it is, it is currently required based on our traditional path of premises. Right, and certainly that feedback we've been bringing to the high school administration to have conversations with the faculty who would absolutely need to be a part of that.
Right, and there's also, there's a financial aspect to that as well. You know, these exams are not inexpensive to take. And some colleges are very specific with even, even if you get a good score, they don't take it. So I know there are some students for financial reasons. Don't want to have the money for all those APs. So I just, I'm just wondering if that's going to be in the mix moving forward. I completely get it that they want kids to have an assessment at the end of their class. So I'm assuming that it may get revisited down the road.
But it could also do two very desirable things at the same time. It would allow students to challenge themselves while at the same time reducing stress.
Right.
And I, so that's always been one of our goals. And we have to remember why we worked so hard to keep the schools open all year last year. And that was because we have the mental health of our students up the forefront of our priorities. So as we get back to our normal times, I do want to keep that, that focus on our students' mental health and stress. Because our students do excel academically. But we want to take care of, of the whole child, so.
I hear. I, I hear in your comments some of the benefits associated with having the AP exam be potentially optional. There's another piece of this conversation, though, that, that would, that needs to be fleshed out, is ensuring that students approach those courses with seriousness and everything.
Absolutely.
Right, so that, that is the, that's the conversation that needs to occur, which can occur at a high school level. They can talk about this something before.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if there's no other questions for Adam, we'll transition to our audit report. We still take this one second, so Adam, you're going to turn that up here. And then Andrew, if you can introduce Adam to the community, and then David will place your PowerPoint on the presentation, and then Adam will go over the.
All I want to say is our partner between the County of Davis and our external audit firm, each year, County of Davis comes in and reviews the disarian Asian position, our ranking records, and images of our external audit report. And I want to thank Adam for his time helping the AP office speed on the different finances, but also helping us close the books during a period of tension with this, no small test that happens. Kathy Winter, for some time, she's also here, has done a great job of getting students processed. That is the end of it, Adam.
All right, okay, as David mentioned, I want to give you a summary of the results from the June 30th, 2021 audit. Okay, to the features of the audit, it was follows. In June, 11th, we did a little bit of field work, where we tested, we tested controls. We cashed the fee against this person's chaos. The actual field work was held the week of July 26, and then we had another audit committee, which is required meeting on September 21. And tonight, we're going over the summary of the audit. Okay, detained within the audit reports, a summary of communication, a summary of the financial statements, the management letter, which is the communication of the internal, control matters, to those charged with governance, and then some other comments. Included in the summary of communications, these are some of the auditor's responsibility under the standards. One is to form an opinion based on our audit. Another is to obtain reasonable rather than absolute assurance that the financial statements are free of material statement. Maintain professional skepticism. Conduct the audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, known as US GAAS. During the audit, there were no material injuries, no fraudulent financial reporting, misappropriation of assets noted, and then other instances or suspicions or allegations of fraud. Some of management's responsibilities is to establish and maintain effective internal controls. As I mentioned, there were no material weaknesses. To comply with all the laws, regulations, grants, and contracts. And to have adequate judgment and accounting estimates, which they were needed to be reasonable, and there were no significant audit adjustments. In addition, there were no disagreements with management. There were no unresolved difficulties in the audit, no confrontation by management with other accountants, and PKF of County of Davis is independent with respect to the school district in accordance with relevant professional standards. And there were no irregularities or no declines. Okay, in the management letter, there were three comments. One had to do with the audit readiness, the fixed assets, or something called the capital assets. The information that we received initially was not in agreement with the internal records or to the prior year's audit. There was some back and forth, it was eventually resolved, but it didn't cause a slight delay. The other comment had to do with the timeliness of cash deposits. New York State requires that all deposits made be made within 72 hours of receipt. There were several deposits within the extra classroom activities fund that were not made within that time period. And lastly, there were four capital projects that had no activity in the current year. Now, these comments are basically control deficiencies as opposed to a material weakness or a significant deficiency, meaning that this is, for the most part, information for the board to address. I know that Andrew had prepared a response to these three comments. Okay, now, I don't know if anybody can see this, but this is the general fund schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, both budget and actual. So, of course, it is rather small up there, I think everybody should have a copy. I'll just go through some of the highlights. On the revenue side, the original budget was $124,694,000. The final budget was approximately the same, and the actual results came in at $124,472,000. That total is almost $2,001.8 billion greater than in the prior year. A large portion of that came from the tax levies, plus it did stay within the cap. In addition, the federal rate was up slightly because we received two CARES grants, and that's recorded in the other area. On the expenditure side, the original budget was $130,314. That was basically remained the same, $130,252,000, and the actual came in at $125,962,000. That's up 5.5 million from the prior year. And a good portion of the expenditures that showed an increase were directly related to COVID from the prior year. The general government support was up by 2.2 million, and that was because certain expenditures within the capital projects fund were reclassified into the general fund. Instruction was up minimally, $528,000. Pupil transportation was up, because again, that's directly related to COVID from the prior year. And the employee benefits showed an increase of 1.2 million, and that was related to the increase in the employee retirement system, the teachers' retirement system, and the health benefits. The debt service expenditures remain comparable to the prior year. So the excess of deficiency or deficiency of revenues over expenditures in the actual column, the fifth number up, was about 1.5 million. Then you had other financing uses, which was a transfer out to the special aid fund, which was increased from the original budget, because basically what you did was you eliminated and rolled off some old prior receivables from the state that weren't collectible from 2015, 16, 17, 18, and some from 1920. And you transferred an additional $750,000 into the capital projects fund. So the net change in fund balance, if you look at the original budget column, you see the bracketed $5,870,000. When you put together the 2021 budget, you anticipated utilizing 5.8 million of fund balance to balance the budget. You increased that number during the year to 7.1 million, but in actuality, you only used $3,184,000, thereby generating an overall positive budgetary variance of almost $4,3915,000. So if you take the net change in fund balance, the shortfall of 3.2 million, add into your fund balance at the beginning of the year of $22,911,000, you ended the year with a total fund balance of $19,727,000. This is the general fund balance sheet. I basically just want to focus on the middle of the page going down, it's the fund balance. The assets and the liabilities had minor fluctuations. So in your fund balance, you had non-spendable fund balance, which are prepaid expenditures, Then you had total reserves, or restricted fund balance, of $8,784,000. You had one for tax surcharge claims, which was down $100,000 due to the calculation. The employee benefit accrued liability, which is compensated absences, that's the time off that the employees earn. That is down about $500,000, some of those funds were utilized during the year. The employees' retirement system was about comparable to the prior year, there's some interest allocated, that's $1,471,000. The future capital projects, you use $650,000 of that to fund certain capital projects during the year, and then the others are about $1,527,000. The total reserves are $8,784,000. In the assigned fund balance, you have encumbrances of $2,159,000, which are basically purchase orders which were issued prior to June 30th, for which you hadn't received the goods or services as of June 30th. That $2,159,000 will be rolled into your 2122 original budget. And then you are taking $3,542,000 out of the unassigned fund balance at the end of 2021, and using that to balance the 2122 budget. That number is the same number that was appropriated at the end of June 30th, 2020. So you ended the year with an unassigned fund balance of almost $5,000,497,600, and that's equal to 3.81% of the 2122 budget. And the New York State statutory limit for the unassigned fund balance is 4%, so you have a rule of 4% limit.
Alan, I just want to mention something on the restricted fund balance, because that's a high number, you know, 8.7 million. So I just want to clarify, just so people know, that we, you know, we're restricted in what we do put into that, into those categories based on reasonable estimates of, of future expenses.
Right, for example, the tax surcharge of $2.7 million cannot exceed the outstanding claims that exist at this point in time based upon the payment. Usually, a claim is submitted, and the payout is anywhere from 30% to 35% to 40%. So your total claims outstanding or that are pending is usually calculated using those percentages, and that's the limits you could have in that reserve. The employee benefit accrued liability cannot exceed what's outstanding for the compensated absences that have actually been earned by the employees after June 30th. The employees' retirement system does not have a limit, but generally, the state controller likes the amount to be within three years or three years worth of expenditures, so you're within that limit. The future capital projects was established by the voters, and you're certainly within that limit. And then the various other reserves are, some of them do have statutory limits, but you're not in excess of any of those. So lower reserves are within the required limits. Okay, so just to summarize, we issued an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean opinion. It's the best opinion you can receive. There were no material weaknesses noted during the audit. The school district's rating is triple A for Moody's. And again, you appropriated almost 3.5 million to balance the 2122 budget. In addition, the district implemented GAZB, Government Accountant Standards Board Statement Number 84, which basically took your agency fund, which only, which was a fund that basically had payroll withholdings, and there were extra classroom activity fund deposits in that fund, and we removed that fund, the GAZB removed that fund, and those funds are now, those activities are now either in the general fund or the special purpose fund. So the agency fund is gone, and the new fund is called a custodial fund, which you have no activity in that fund, so it does not appear in the financial statements. So overall, the implementation of that, Statement 84, was not a major change for the district. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Uh, may I, just, just for clarification purposes, the, the board is also, has membership in the audit committee? So this is our second time experiencing this presentation from Alan, so I just want to make that clarification for the community. We do have an audit committee that meets and has community members who are a part of it, as well as Kathy and Andrew. So this isn't our first time seeing this information, and we've already had a chance to interact around our project with Alan. So with that said, I didn't know if anyone had any additional questions for Alan tonight here, so.
Thank you. I would just thank you very much for, for all of the support.
I'd also, I'd like to thank Kathy in the audience, or Treasure, and Andrew. It's hard to come in, Andrew came in in the middle of trying to close out the school year and prepare the audit for Board of Education, and that, that is not easy to do, so thank you to both of you for supporting this, this process. And Alan, thank you for joining us this evening.
And thank you to Warren, who I now can't see because they're outside, but for heading the audit committee and, and taking the time to, to share those meetings. There you are.
Good. All right, thank you, Alan. Don't take, yeah, leave that there. Okay, and that's the end of the superintendent's report and all the presentations we made.
Christine, do we have to vote to approve, to accept the, is that, that's in the agenda, right?
It's in the agenda.
Should we do that right now? We usually do. Can we take that?
I think we need to allow the public to comment on that before we vote on it.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right.
So that actually brings us to our committee report. Thank you to Christine and to Adam for the presentations and all the information, and obviously, the information that's coming in this year is always a little bit dependent on the fact that after this COVID year, but we appreciate the updates and knowing what's going on in districts and how our kids are performing. And I thought the math data was particularly interesting because that, that is the most controllable data point that we have, and not a state data.
Thank goodness we put that in place through the strategic planning process.
Yeah, so thank you, and I think that would probably through this year, all the community to our most useful data point. So that brings us to committee reports. If anybody has anything to report, I'll just note quickly that the policy committee meeting that was originally scheduled for tomorrow has been postponed a week and is scheduled for the end of the settlement is not clear at all. And that's all I have to report. Anybody else have anything?
Communications, we met on, I believe it was Thursday, the 23rd. Vicki and I met with Christine. We are also going to be continuing our communications advisory committee, and I know we reached out to some members from the community that we had with us last year, and they'll stay on. We found it very beneficial to get community input on ways that we can better engage with the community and get our messages across and get feedback from them as well. But in terms of, I mean, I think we, we just, we discussed a couple of things and what some goals were for the year. One of the things we did discuss, which I think some people will see, is that we talked about putting some, you know, considering putting a hub on our website for, for certain notices, information like we do with COVID notifications, or we do things with Form Base Code, or things that's sort of like easy access and easy to find, notices that get sent out. We understand everybody gets a lot of emails, especially if they have multiple children and multiple schools, but we also want our community members to be able to access our information in a really easy fashion. So we've talked about that, and we've talked about ways to connect with community members that don't have children in the schools anymore, to let them know what we're doing, all the exciting stuff that's going on. And Vicki, I don't know if you want to add, like, things that we had discussed in terms of some, some goals for this year, Christine as well.
I think that's just about it, and I, I think that it would be really useful for us to think of ways to reach out to different stakeholder groups who don't normally interact with the school district. I know that, you know, while senior communities might, might enjoy coming to theater and concert performances.
performances at the school district, but that's going to be more post-COVID days.
Right. Also, kind of, everyone keeps asking us for an alumni database. We don't have one, so we're talking about, is there a way for us to create an opportunity to reach out for alumni for different reasons, in some kind of systematic way? So we're going to talk about that.
Those all sound like really good and interesting ideas, and I'm excited to hear more really about the hub. I think, you know, as you said, Jane, we're all so sort of innovative and email, that just knowing we could go somewhere and find something.
Right. There's always, there's always new ways, and better ways to present our information and to make it as, those websites as facile as possible. So we're going to work on it.
Anything else?
Great. And that brings us to our public comments period. So we welcome public comments, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments, please, to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, the board members may have a discussion and a consult regarding the comments presented. So if you'd like to leave a public comment, please come down to one of the microphones and say your name and text and your comment.
Good evening. My name is Chris Goldenbrand. I'm a prospect from Chappaqua. I'm a 23-year resident of Chappaqua and parent two Greeley graduates, and currently a deputy here. I just want to briefly comment on the FDIS and form-based code currently being considered by the town board. This process is really a fantastic exercise in civics and good government, specifically the distinction between policy and process. I believe this is a policy matter. A form-based code is totally inappropriate for a community like Newcastle, where residents are engaged, involved, and want to say how the community achieves appropriate development. To be the town's own consultant noted in working group in 2019, the form-based code is not generally appropriate in town, but it is highly prohibited. Nevertheless, we're a representative democracy, not an opinion democracy, as the current town board majority is. Town board repeatedly, there's no requirement for expansive community outreach and no ability to have a referendum. An interested agency basically learn what they need to know when they need to know it. So if the planning board, the library board, the fire department, and the school board are unsatisfied, well, that's just the way it goes. Up until last summer, the town board was in fact satisfied to rely on public hearing notices and formal procedures. And in the best of times, i.e. not during the global pandemic, most residents just don't have the bandwidth to track. Until the Rastin's opposition began to build and resident voices were heard loud and clear, it was essentially next to no community outreach. So process is key, key to build consensus, key to ensure acceptance, key to maintain the public's trust. The fact that the school board, as sewers of the crown jewel of Newcastle, are not satisfied as of today, at this late date, to accept the FGEIS inadequate, complete, simply shocking should cause all residents to feel betrayed. Not necessarily by the policy, as ill-advised it may be. That can be debated, ideally over time, with full information and transparency. But equally critically, by the process. Along those lines, I just want to quote from the school board Kansas' letter today. "The school board of Jeps is extremely curtailed time table giving interested agencies review of the FGEIS. This timetable was not intended to and did not allow time for the school to provide detailed input on the FGEIS." There's a further elaboration of those efficiency guidelines. So as a 23-year resident, I just want to thank you. In the midst of the global pandemic, where all our lives were turned upside down, and we're seeing faculty, staff, administrators, and school board that have been taxed in ways that were previously unimaginable, unimaginable, you all collectively navigated uncharted waters through it. It is beyond belief that you then had to wrestle with a dramatic and transformational zoning development project that will place unknown but entirely foreseeable strains on our schools and exacerbate the head of tax burden for residents already there. Yet that you've been kept in the dark and essentially disregarded, and of this process is put mildly unfortunate. P.S., five more seconds. As you are concluding your board meeting tonight, the town board announced that it's postponed tomorrow's meeting to October 5th to give the board more time to consider your comments and concerns.
Hi, I'm Peggy Miko. I am the president of the Chappaqua PTA, and I just wanted to give you guys a little information and to tell you what we're up to. First of all, we had an amazing event on Saturday. Our Diversity, Race, and Belonging Committee held a family welcome back event, and thanking Dr. Ackerman, to Adam Pease, and maybe Tip for attending. We also had principals Andrew Priscilla and Tara Bartlet and others. We had 300 registrants for the event, and it was a great turnout and a lot of new families. And so I really appreciate, on a weekend, you all taking time to spend an afternoon, a sunny afternoon, with us and with our families. Then I want to let you know that the Chappaqua PTA Fall Meeting is Monday, October 4th. It's going to be at the Greeley Tent, and we welcome everyone to join the PTA and attend. Registration is required. And our guest speaker is Wajahat Ali. He's an author, a speaker, a parent. He has a tech talk that's called "The Case for Having Children," and he has a message of unity for our entire community. So I'm hoping that you all will consider coming. We have our principal conferences coming up, and so I'm very excited that we're working and making events that parents can be at least on our campuses, outside, and meeting their principals in real life. And our school chairs have really been working hard to try to do as much as they can for our families, and everyone has been so, so helpful. Thank you to Dr. Ackerman and all her team for making testing available for all students. I know that there are families who have concerns and maybe haven't availed themselves of it yet, but I really feel it helps build their confidence about how you're dealing with everything. I know it's always, it's always everyone pitching in in all unusual ways during these COVID times, but it doesn't go unnoticed. And lastly, thank you for your additional time and really advocating for the school district and for all of our students in helping the town through its big decisions that has come up. I know that it's a lot of reading. I've tried to go through the pages myself. So all of you as volunteers, I really, really appreciate you taking the time and going in on your way.
Are there any additional public comments? If not, then we're going to move.
We have just a brief discussion.
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate that one of our residents has shared with us that the meeting was originally scheduled for tomorrow, but the district has not been notified of that by the town, so... Christine, we can't do it very well. I just want to, what I'm sharing with you is, in public comments tonight, it was mentioned that the meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow night on form-based code, FDIS, was rescheduled based on our correspondence submitted today, but we have not been notified of that officially. So I just, I just want to say that publicly, just, I have my, I have my email open right now. I never received any notification of that in fact that's happened. So that may very well be the case, but I never received a notification.
I would just note that I did get a notice, a town notice, as I sign up for Maxwell Awards, that came to my personal email, but did not receive anything to a board email or anything in response to the board email address.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make that noted, or we would have shared that ourselves. But I appreciate the commenters today, and thank you, thank you for reminding everyone that we are volunteers, so people don't actually know that.
And thank you. Thank you, Peggy, for the event on Saturday was wonderful. So thank you for sharing that with us.
That brings us to consents and recitations. Can I have a motion, please, for items 3.1 and 3.2, which are, except for the minutes of the September 14th and September 23rd board meetings respectively?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye. I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented. I move that we accept 4.1 as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented. I will move 4.2 non-instructional. I'll second 4.2.
Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. Use the consent agenda from its board education to make more effective use of time by acting in a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board which discusses individually a particular piece of difference on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Does anybody at this point want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Obviously, we can still discuss anything on the consent agenda, but does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? No? Okay. Then can I have a motion, please, to move the consent agenda, which is items 5.1 through 5.16, including CSE summaries, the audit committee recommendations, accepting the external audit report, the gifts that Adam mentioned, supplemental agreements, and a number of other routine matters?
I will move the consent agenda.
I will second. Any questions or discussion?
I just want to reiterate our thanks to Newcastle United for you and to the FEA for their guidance. And, so I have a question. Go ahead, Warren.
Warren, you go first. I'll have Warren.
I'm getting a delay here, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'd just like to thank Andrew Lennon for stepping in as our new assistant superintendent for business and taking on the audit. He always impressed us when we got here, but it's a big job as it is. Just to get to speak so quickly, for Kathy helping him and the whole administration, and her O'Connor babies who are always doing a great job for us. So thank you very much.
I just had a question about the bids for the roof on West Orchard. I know that's been a repair that's been in the works for a while. So do we anticipate that we work against them better bids, or maybe they were like not informing or issues with what was submitted? So I just had a quick question about that, if there was any update on that.
The single largest issue is that there's more repairs to be done than the funds available at the moment. So what we're going to do is just to run a, to predict ourselves, we're going to look at the school board that work and identify the spaces that are in need of repair. We're watching it again to address those as a priority. We'll opt to back with the space on that roof for future funding.
And I think we talked, I had Joe explain that to us before, that it's time to fix the stages, so we might have to break this job off, is what you're saying? Okay.
Well, absolutely have to do it, yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to item 6.1. Under 6, we are acknowledging contracts previously approved by the superintendent for board policies securely by purchasing bidding. So I move that we acknowledge the following, the contract for agreement with services under 6.1.
I'll move item 6.1. I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor? Facilities. Can I have a motion, please, for 7.1, which is acknowledgement of a change order for the theme center at Greeley previously approved by the superintendent?
This is a credit.
Oh, we got money back!
Yes, that's why it's large, but it's under that section.
So that's great! Who wants to move the credit?
I'll move 7.1.
I'll second. Any questions, concerns? You like credit? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Items 8.1 and 8.2, can I have a motion to take them together? It's acknowledging receipt of claims auditor report for August 2021 and receipt of the treasurer's report also for August 2021.
I will move items 8.1 and 8.2, acknowledging receipt of the financials. I'll second.
Questions, concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, that brings us to notice of future meetings. Our next meeting is Wednesday, October 13th at 7:30 back here. We will have the Warrenburg Elementary School presentation. That's always fun. We love having students come in. And following that, the second meeting in October, on the 27th, we will have the West Orchard Elementary School presentation, also back here in the auditorium. Can I please have a motion to adjourn at 9:18 p.m.?
I move to adjourn at 9:18, or 6:18 by now.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.